The Budget Workshop of the North Branford Town Council to order at 6:36. Please stand for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Deputy Mayor McMillan.
Here.
Counselor Abelson.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Goode.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Palladino.
Here.
Counselor Plicia.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampano.
Not the last one.
Okay, first item on the agenda is budget overview for the 2024-25 operational and capital budget. First one is Board of Education, and we are going to try and keep it to the 30-minute time slot for all departments presenting today.
Is there a lock on that?
I don't know.
There should be a lock on the wheels. Hit the lock over there.
It's on wheels, that's why I keep...
Yeah, but there's a lock on it. Hit the lock.
Yeah, but there's a lock on it.
It's right here, we'll keep on pushing every time someone touches it.
I don't know where they have it set. I believe that's... I did, in the front.
Thanks, Scott.
So we're going to present the budget a little bit differently this year, since you all have had time to review the budget and you all have hard copies. I don't think it's in the best interest of any of us just to regurgitate the budget with the slides. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about the Board of Education, what we do. I'm going to highlight a few overviews, then we'll open it up for question and answers, because I'm sure you all have some very pressing questions that you'd like to be answered. Martha will take that piece of the presentation, and Judy Bannon is going to add in some pieces of personal anecdotes. Rose, you looking at me funny? Oh, okay. You look very intent. I appreciate that. So I first want to acknowledge that I did vote no to the Board of Education budget. I want to acknowledge that because I'm sure that is going to be a question. The board is made up of seven members, and when there is a majority vote and the vote is to pass a budget, it is my duty to bring that budget forward and not only present it, but to support it. So that's what I'm doing. I'm doing my duty. I'd also want to acknowledge the error that had TBD in the capital budget. It was an administrative error and an oversight. Thank you for your patience. That item is being removed from the budget request and is being reviewed by an insurance company. So we just wanted to let you know that for an update. The proposed budget increase is approximately 7.7%, a little bit over a $2.5 million increase. As I stated earlier, you have the budget, and we'll be open to a Q and A. We want to make sure that you're comfortable with our request and have all of your questions answered. It's our job to make sure that we balance the responsibility to the taxpayers and to be children's advocates. We understand that our ask impacts every home's mil rate, and we want to make sure that the townspeople understand what they're getting for that money. We also understand that the Board of Education budget makes up the majority of the town's budget, so we need to be fiscally responsible when we're making our ask. How far is the Board of Education's reach? We know less than 25% of households in North Branford and Northford have children in the school system, but that's not really a true indicator of how far the reach of the schools go. Families in North Branford stay in town. There are aunts, uncles, grandparents, friends, that all have people they know in the school system and support it, and that is evidenced by participation in the school play, you can look out into the audience, at sports games, and simply when our own teams win a state championship, the route home. The Board of Education is one of the largest employers in B. How many teachers you think live in town that actually are employed by NB? The district currently employs 333 people. This number does not include substitutes or coaching staff. Out of the 333 employees, 104 reside in North Branford and 91 reside in Northford. 69 of those staff are North Branford graduates. That's pretty telling, right? Our people come home. They come home to teach, they come home to coach, they come home to volunteer. North Branford school systems build a community. I was actually talking to Todd at a game recently and about the senior graduates, and as they were leaving the court for their last game, all of them were in tears. And they weren't crying because they lost the game. They were crying because it was the last time they were going to play with their friends. And we talked about that push-pull of being ready to leave town but wanting to stay, and how successful our schools do, and what a good job they do at preparing them to leave for the future, and wanting to come home, of course. Salaries make up about $21.5 million of our budget, and that's 60%. Much of this is contractually based. We have 10 teachers who have earned bachelor degrees, 97 that have earned masters, 51 have earned sixth year, and eight have earned their seventh year. We have a very, very impressive teaching staff. They're continually doing better, and we're actually looping them in to their own teacher development, and Carter has done an amazing job with that. You may want to ask him more questions about that. Carter, sorry to put you on the spot, as I always do, but I think you're getting pretty used to it. So, there we go. But we are doing an amazing job with continuing education, developing within, and really looking at cutting end trends on our curriculum. So this will launch our students into career paths, and I don't mean just college when I say career paths. We are looking at kids to have success in the future, whether it's college-bound, whether it's the trades, whether it's the military. We are trying to launch successful adults. Judy, would you like to give some of the awards that our teachers have won?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Judy Bannon. I'm a proud retiree of the North Branford school system after 22 years of service and a new board member. So I feel that I'm in a unique position to be able to share with you how very proud we are of all of our excellent educators. Every one of our teachers is a rock star. But I'd like to take a minute to make you aware of some accolades, accomplishments, and awards that were earned by members of our staff. We have five North Branford High School educators, Chelsea, Jen, Lauren, Rebecca, and Megan, who are fellowship award recipients from the Fund for Teachers. Our language arts teacher, Rob Ford, earned the National Council Teachers of English Quarterly Award for an article that he published in their national publication. Our technology department, Ken, Chris, and Nick, was named the Connecticut Technology Department of the Year in 2024. This year, Babby Noon was inducted into the National Field Hockey Coaches Association Hall of Fame. Cindy Tirolo, our TVS nurse and nursing coordinator, was recognized as an NB Education Foundation Shining Star for her leadership during COVID. Jill Feltes is an Auschwitz Legacy Fellow. In addition to participating in virtual workshops, this summer she will travel to Poland for some firsthand experience at the Auschwitz Museum that she'll bring back to her children. Diane Artais was selected as a Special Olympics Unified Coach of the Year in 2017. Liz Kaplan was recognized as a North Branford Education Foundation Shining Star and also as a Shoreline Chamber of Commerce Woman of Excellence Award. Jackie Thurston is a Fulbright Scholar, a global educator, and has received Connecticut Voice Magazine's Unsung Hero Award. Shelley Thompson, TVS 4th grade teacher, received the prestigious Milken Educator Award in 2010. In 2017, our own Dr. Welch, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, was recognized as an Outstanding School Administrator. And finally, North Branford has celebrated Lauren Danner as the 2017 Connecticut Teacher of the Year. In 2019, Jackie Thurston was a finalist for the same honor, and I was a semifinalist last year. I wanted to bring some of this forward just to let you know that not only are we a well-educated staff, we are a staff that's being recognized for our efforts elsewhere as well. So please keep that in mind as you think about our staff and salaries and benefits. Thank you.
The board passed the superintendent's budget. Most of this was contractual. Some are grants that are now being covered by the Board of Ed and we're requesting funding. This includes the cost to retain four instructional coaches and one social worker. The board acknowledges when we get grants and grants are pursued, there should be measures of success put in place to determine if the program is meeting the goal. We also realize we need to look at alternatives for grant-funded initiatives other than the cost being absorbed by the Board of Education budget when the grant ends. We are not only acknowledging, but we're working towards resolving these issues as we pursue grants in the future. I want Judy to talk a little bit about what the coaches do and what the social workers do, and why we decided to support them and continue them through the budget.
So to discuss the impact of our instructional coaches, I reached out to our elementary-level coaches, Kelly Sobosinski and Heather Glenn, and I asked them to share a time with me when they felt their positive impact on students, and this is what they shared. This year, Heather signed our 4th grade students up for the Scripps National Spelling Bee. Every month, she presented them with new study lists. Each month, one student in particular would react negatively and try everything in their power to get out of participating. The student would repeatedly say, "I'm not doing that. I'm a bad speller." Each month, Heather would challenge her thinking. When it came time for classroom spelling bees, this student made it to the finals. When prepping for the finalists, she persisted in pushing back, saying she probably wouldn't do it. When it came time for the school-wide bee, she came in second place, finally having to admit, "I guess I'm a good speller." Opportunities like this spelling bee, a new experience, overcoming the fear of standing in front of a crowd of peers and adults to show off a skill you feel unsure of, is a life lesson in perseverance that will stay with her and carry into all subjects and life situations. Kelly shared a story of a Tier III. If you're not familiar with Tier III, it is a student who requires the most academic support, so a Tier III 4th grade student who learned what it meant to be a courageous thinker. During learning walks, this child was observed presenting in front of their peers, talking about student work as the admin team watched on. Getting up in front of peers and five teacher administrators, talking about her math thinking took courage. Kelly's teaching, her belief in her student, and consistent coaching sessions with the student's teacher led to that proud moment. Dr. Welch, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, shared data with me that suggests strong growth related to instructional coaching. But it's the stories like those I just shared that a teacher lives for. It is only when a student feels safe enough to take a risk that we know we have provided the academic and emotional support for students to thrive in a safe learning environment where mistakes are seen as opportunities for learning. Our coaches feel an extreme obligation to consistently think about how we, as a district, can move forward. There is always new thinking to be shared, and they embrace their role wholeheartedly. Their work allows teachers and students to believe that they have the capacity to succeed even when something is challenging. If you would like to speak further about instructional coaching in our district, please feel free to reach out to me. I'd be more than happy to have a conversation with you. Thanks.
We're going to move to benefits now. 16% of our budget is made up of benefits. That's about $5.6 million. The town and the BOE share the medical benefits provider. Cost sharing is outlined in each union contract. We negotiate these contracts with the same cadence, and again, if the town council doesn't agree with how we negotiate, they have the opportunity to decline and refuse. Employees under the teacher's contract pay about 23% for their medical benefits. We do have some opportunity to align non-union positions with similar union positions for consistency as far as cost sharing, and that work has already begun. You can ask questions to Martha if there are any additional information you need to know, but I think probably benefits is the least questionable area since we do share the same provider. Special education makes up about $2 million of our budget. The law requires that students with disabilities have the same right to public education that students without a disability have. This means that we must provide modifications, aid, and related services free of charge to students with disabilities and their parents and guardians. The cost varies, and the number of children vary annually. We try to predict that, but it's not always possible. There is reimbursement twice per year when we go over threshold, but again, that varies. Facility is always a hot topic for North Branford schools. I've heard more than once that we don't take care of our schools, and I can tell you John Florio must twinge when he hears that. He's probably one of the hardest-working men I know, and his team works diligently in all of our schools, and he partners with Franny Marola and others in town to keep our schools safe and intact. John has been working consistently over the last few years on a maintenance plan. Our schools are not all young. Jerome Harrison was built somewhere around 1998, Totucket Valley, I think in the 70s. North Branford Intermediate, I'm not really sure when that was built, but it has a leaky roof, and we all know that. North Branford was 1964, but look at where we're standing now, and it requires maintenance still. And then we have the Augur House that was built in the 60s. All of these buildings require constant maintenance, and maintenance requires funding. So we can't have it both ways. We can't complain about buildings not being maintained and then not funding the maintenance. So we have to choose. North Branford schools create a tremendous community. They make us proud on our fields, on our courts, and in our plays. Softball has won eight in a row shoreline titles. Field hockey has won seven shoreline titles in a row and three state championships. Girls' lacrosse has been the shoreline champs 2018, 2019, 2021. Boys' lacrosse, shoreline champions 2019. Baseball, runner-up 2023. Indoor track, two national qualifiers in 2023, 2024. Volleyball made the state tournament for the first time this year since 2005. We understand our students have varying home lives, socioeconomic situations, and goals. We treat people like individuals. We don't lump them into one role. We don't just look at their test scores. We look at them as a whole person. We try to chart a course for them that will make them successful. I know there has been a lot of emphasis on test scores, and while I know that is an indicator of success, it is not the only indicator, nor is which college a child is going to, because there are very reasons why a child may choose an Ivy League or may choose a state school over an Ivy League based on economic situations. There is a wide range of variance in North Branford. Until you know the students that are coming through the town, it's really difficult to say one size fits all. Looking ahead at opportunities, I don't want to make it sound like we don't know we have areas to improve on. We absolutely do, and we want to work towards better. We know that the amount of money per pupil does not equal higher achievement. What we need to do is evaluate how the most successful schools are spending their money and what they're spending their money on. What is making them more successful? We need to dig deep into our workflows to see if we can find some efficiencies and savings. We've been doing some processes for the same over and over since God knows when, and they need to be evaluated. We need to be mindful of grants to determine how and if they can be sustained without Board of Ed absorbing the cost, and if they're even worth sustaining, or if it's a mission we want to support. We need to make sure we have defined strong measures in place so we can clearly see success or failures of programs and interventions and course correct immediately. We need to evaluate overtime and workman's comp spending when we see it going over and evaluate why that's happening. I thank you for listening to something a little bit different than we've done in the past. Now, I'm going to invite Martha up, and I know you have some burning questions, and I'm sure she's happy to answer all of them. If anyone has any questions for me, I'm still here.
Nope. I mean, I'm just going to ask my questions, and I'm not sure who's going to answer them, but it might not be Martha. It might be an administrator. It might be John. I'm not really sure, but...
Yeah, he's on good.
Well, no, we have live ones on... These are all live. The bigger ones are live, and then there's three of them up here for the...
Can we grab that and we can share that?
This is the one for the TV, though. Okay, so I'm just going to start with capital right now. So I'm going to focus on capital a little bit. So there are a few items on your capital budget last year that do not appear on this year. So I was just wondering, did they get done, or did they drop off the request? One was the auditorium lobby floor, and I know this has been going back and forth for years. We gave you money, you gave it back. It appears on capital, then it goes away, so... The second one is the athletic storage building at MBHS. Last year, it was on your capital budget for $95,000. This year, it's $80,000. So is there a decrease? So we're back to 95?
We're at 95.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Then, last year, there was the... What was it called? The upgrade of building management systems, and it was for over $500,000. It was $511,000, and this year it's $359,000. So just what was the difference that it dropped?
I'm going to have John speak into the live microphone.
Okay.
And then he will go through those three items, starting with the auditorium flooring. We corrected the water problem by receiving it through the undershadow. We're able to eliminate the cause of that. He'll speak specifically to the flooring, the gauge of the flooring, and why that auditorium needs. Not only that work, but I put it today about the sound system and some requests for that too as well. So when you look at the age of the return, you did the carpet, but being in there today, looking at it now, we have more things that need to be done. So John, we'll start with that. John?
The auditorium floor, probably the second time the floor was put down. The idea was on the floor, the floor is heating in certain spots. I had a contractor come up and looked at the auditorium floor. It has to be all chipped up and laid down again. Cheapest price I got was $150,000. So I don't have that in mind in this budget. And so we did opt go back to this year's request. We have some more pressing issues. We have to pick and choose. Will we come to you within the year? So when we're looking at weighing an H-Back system or an energy management system against the tile floor, the T-Minist response, and all the people of the Arizona, we have to pick and choose what we're going to come to and ask. So that's why we... The auditorium lobby floor was not on the capital request issue.
The year that it was and we funded it, it was half the cost, less than half the cost of what your quote is now, and then the money was given back to us, and it was never done. So...
The auditorium floor was not on my personal direction at the time. So if it was not done from the floor here, that's not on me.
I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just saying, the board asked for the money. We gave it to them, and then the money was given back to us, and it was never done. So, and now it's three times the cost.
It probably might not have been done, because I don't think it was three years ago. We could have done that floor for what we say was in there, $60,000.
Well, this was probably at least five years ago.
Thank you very much.
When it was asked for and we gave the money. Oh, actually, it was in 2013, '14. So that was 10 years ago. That's when the money was asked for, and if it hasn't been fixed since then, we gave the money then, and then the money was given back to us. So...
The floor has been repaired in the worst spots. There are parts coming up now that are, again, trouble spots. If we do not repair it, we will repair it again. We will not replace it, but now it's blocked as well. I guess you could figure that your request is going to have the lobby floor.
Okay.
The energy management system, the energy management system, the price went down, probably because we are shopping, and we are working with the current vendor who has this school, the ingredient school, has our energy management system. We want to tie the entire system in on one system. It's a lot easier for myself. And vendors put in, I could use it from home if I have to. Talk to every building, from every building if I need to. That vendor seemed he already is in two of our buildings, was willing to give us a very fair price on upgrading the energy management system from the rest of the buildings, seeing he was getting the ownership. So if the original quote we gave him was five, and now it's down to three change, that's the reason.
Well, not really.
In our exterior storage building, it was 95. Originally, we tried to do some things less with that building, but we determined that our original design is what we wanted to go with, and that's why we went back to the 95.
But the 80 is what the Board of Ed approved. That was the... When they approved, they approved at the 80,000. That was the motion, was the 80,000, which was what was presented to them. Go ahead. You can... Do you have a question? Yep, you can.
I have a question that concerns me, and if one of the three board members who voted against this budget would explain why, because I find that kind of upsetting that you're presenting a budget when three members voted against it.
Okay, I have another question in regards to... On page 28 is the employee count, and in your current year, 2324, you have nine administrators listed on here and nine for next year, but we all know that you didn't fill the position of intermediate school principal, so...
How do you know I'm done?
Huh?
How do you know I'm done?
You're done what?
How do you know I'm going to fill it?
I don't, because I'm just looking at your projected for next year.
No, it's going to be ten. You have over 35 applicants for that position.
Oh, so you're going to hire two administrators then? So that means you should, between salaries and benefits, you should have roughly $200,000, right? Between the two on there, on that. Okay. Right, because benefits, it all depends if the person takes it or not and what it is, but just between the salary and benefit, it's roughly there on there. So last year, we got the line item transfers, but we didn't get them for the full year. We only got them up through April. So can we...
What's that?
Can I request a copy of that for the rest of last year? Can I request a copy of that for the rest of last year? All right.
Under this breakdown, you know, under the change in requested budget, under textbooks, it shows a 594% increase. And there is a little wider change, but someone explain that to me more, as to what all that means, please.
Line item 641.
It's the line item 641.
I believe there's some AP tax books in there. The AP tax books are more expensive than... I believe there's AP tax books in there, and typically more expensive than a pretty hard textbook, if you will, and over, purchased every year, but every once in a while you can get offsite when they get updated.
What's the total dollar value that you're looking at? Well, it goes from, it's an increase of $15,794.6.
Right. So if there's an AP class, a tax book or a class, I think it's like a college level book, and I guess you're probably paying around $200 per tax book, Mr. Scott. You all think? So if anything, if you have a new course that comes on, you're going to see a dramatic increase, basically, going to be something like that, if you...
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. ELA paperbacks for coursework, Macbeth, Roman, Juliet, a whole bunch of science textbooks.
Place needs.
Okay. And what's the, what's the lifespan on things like that? So you get that this year, we're saying. How long till we're looking at that again?
For a page or better? Seven, seven years.
Yeah, I'm going to say four, five minimum. Depending on the number of sections that would use the same book, there are sometimes grades that would use the same book. Five sections of kids, you got 125 kids going through that book. And then there's sometimes a portion or runoff that make you have 20 or 30 kids using the book.
And sometimes, getting back to this AP textbook, there's a digital component too that you purchase on the line, it's not sent to the college store. So many of our students actually have both the textbook and the digital component.
On the preschool programs, I know, I know we've increased the number of sections we have in preschool. Is that totally funded by a grant? Because I know originally it was.
Section decreased our number of sections. So we...
Well, this year, you have five, right?
And we're stopping at work for next year. So one of our classrooms will be three-year-old classroom. There will be an AM and a PM section, going back to our half-days. And then the other three will be four-year-old sessions. One of them will be a mixed three and four each group. Given the change in kindergarten registration age, we need to be able to accommodate for that gap. And then we'll have two full four-year-old classrooms. We do currently have two of those classrooms that are funded by a grant, which is the Smart Start grant. We have had one of those grants since 2018. The second grant, which came through kind of the COVID recovery, was added in in 2022. Right now, both of those grants are still in the government's budget, and they're going to be going on by May eighth, so we're not going to have an answer to that at this point in time. My contacts at the state are saying that it's in the budget. It's in, it's anticipated to continue. The only one that is really at risk of potentially not continuing is the one that's COVID-related. In the event that the COVID-related grant does go away, we do have some secondary plans in place, because regardless of the funding, we have to be able to provide preschool. Preschool is a mandate for special education students. So currently, in this addition, we have a number of students, both three and four-year-olds, who are identified as having special education needs. And we provide them a classroom as a substitute duration. Our classroom sizes are 15. We have seven special education students. We need seven, or eight general education students to fill those slots.
So, so last year, I remember during your budget talks, the whole push was to have all-day pre-K three because of the issue that you had of not being able to have the regular ed students because of the half-day programs.
Correct, correct.
So, so you're going back to that?
Well, we've incentivized it. So what we're doing is we're grandfathering in those students who are in the three-year-old half-day program. And if they come into the three-year-old half-day program as a general education student, their grandfather is the fourth in. So right now, our registration numbers for our threes are right above where we want them to be, to be at that 50-50 ratio. It could always be a little bit higher. But we also understand that we need to be able to fund the classrooms. And so the half-day program for the threes was, we made that decision in late March and July, this past year as kind of a pilot for, you know, what the kids were able to do and what we felt was in their best interest. I'm Sarah, by the way. I've been talking to myself. Hi.
Yeah, I remember you from last year.
That's a good thing, right?
Yep.
The, the, there was an age restriction that was going to go into place as of this year, and it got pushed. How long did that get pushed up for? We had to be...
Correct. Well, it didn't necessarily get pushed, so that, is this going to allow...
Yeah.
The change in kindergarten age came into effect this year. The state provided some flexibilities for how each district was going to handle that transition. And what Mark Raffiner decided to do was to really provide this as a transition year, flexibility in what that transition is going to look like. So what the age used to be was... This is the end of... What the age used to be was the end of December. December 31st was the cutoff. So if you were born before December, you would, you would be able to enroll in kindergarten. They changed that date to September 1st. So now, if you were born between September 1st and December 31st, where you thought maybe you weren't going to be sending your kids to preschool and enrolling in kindergarten, the state is now saying you need to enroll in kindergarten. Because of the lack of timing that we were provided as a district to put this into place, they provided us with the flexibility to swap. I'll say they provided us the flexibility. They didn't provide the guidance, therefore, it's interpreted by each district as a flexibility. So what we are doing is aligned with what the state is asking us. So we have to provide a screener, we have to provide the option for families to enroll earlier in kindergarten, so maintaining that September through December date. We're allowing them to request what's called a waiver. This is aligned with what the state regulation is. If they submit the waiver, we provide them with multiple screening opportunities throughout the year to ensure that we feel that they are ready for kindergarten. One of the lapses in this process from the state is there is no assessment to say that, yes, my child is ready for kindergarten, or no, they're not. It becomes a very subjective conversation. So our plan as the district was to provide some increased flexibilities for those families requesting the waiver, and to utilize the time that we have to ensure that we have a solid policy in place, we have measures in place that are equitable to all students, and that we're able to plan for both classroom sizes and support structures that need to be in place for the building with, at that school address.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Did you say that the AP testing, you say if the student is qualified?
Screening is a requirement. So right now, we do a regular kindergarten screening. That's for any student coming into kindergarten. What we are doing is utilizing that as our screening mechanism. So it's a requirement by the state that we screen students requesting a waiver. However, the state did not provide us with a measure to utilize, and such a measure at this point in time does not exist.
So really, nobody fails?
Well, it's not, it's, it's are you ready or not? And right now, our, our job is to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the students and hand up the community as well. And to tell families in November and December, who thought their child was going to kindergarten by December, oh, we've got one more year, you need to go figure it out. We're trying to meet them in the middle, and be able to provide additional planning. So our plan is to be able to communicate to our families in this, this summer, what our plans are going to be for the '25, '26 school year. And, and the hope and the anticipation is that the state's going to provide some additional guidance, but we're not moving for that. We're going to put some things in place ourselves to make sure that we're prepared.
So on your capital budget, I know you have one that you prioritize, the Jerome Harrison? That, that's your top priority?
Conversation on March 19th. Yes, if we had to pick. One capital project, based upon the number of students affected by, if the system is malfunctioning, with allergies, asthma, with any number of things. That was the one that was going to impact students the most. And that's our, in the conversation, we decided that that, after careful consideration, was the most important number to pick.
You had to pick a number two and three.
And four?
Sure.
I attached a letter to the board today, and there's four creative ways that we can impact the district without using funding from the taxpayer. You all should have received that and opened that and read that, if you want to go through that right now. The other items for capital, as you know, the auditorium, I mentioned that before, that was also in need of repairs, and that was one that we were comparing to. The track is one that we would push off until we bring up turf. We know it's important to many in this community, and that's something that I would accomplish with them, or we would do anything to that track, and then I would repair it. To rip it up is a million dollars to repair it. It's a fraction of that, and we've got nine years for the last time we did it. We have one season that we use that track. So that would, that would go to when we, you know, turf fills out there. The storage building is something that we're going to come to you for, looking at parking lane. We're on the agenda. That's something that we lack storage here, even in this new building. We store our track equipment and our football equipment out there now in five steel containers that are not climate-controlled. Many years, we throw things away because of moisture and mold. There's things living in and underneath those storage units. So that was one that we were going to look at. Our auditorium was the second one that I mentioned, of importance behind Jerome with the HVAC systems there. Paving is something that's been brought up and playing a role with us here, and, and Sam Howell's here as well with John. They've had this discussion for years, looking at paving, and it was, you know, it was bid on by a private person for a fraction of the cost of what was just put through from Tilcon.
Actually, he did not bid on it. They did not submit a bid when we went out to bid last.
Okay, so it was pricing that was getting to John.
Correct.
So the next phase will be, if you so choose to accept this mission, coming up with a number, a, a real number, going out to bid, because Tilcon's prices are outrageous, it's obviously they're not interested in doing small jobs, and then getting a, a number that would, would work for you. I think there's a punch in there right now for paving.
Well, you have 90, that was allocated a couple of years ago.
And that, so we still have 90. Right. We did. Do we still have that other money from...
What other money? It was only nine.
No, four, the New York torn.
No, you gave that back to them.
Well, it's good.
Huh? We, we worked on the middle school.
How that work? Still a little...
We had a, we had a rebound.
All right, listen, I'm going to go over there. All right, so, building track recovered. Okay. Okay, so again, we do duck, duck those, like, we'll take those off. Gym floor, we're taking off. We want insurance to set that. Building, building management, John spoke to that earlier. So if you have to go one, two, three, do you know the 140 that we spoke to for Jerome with the students' impact? Auditorium, with John, auditorium work in terms of the HVAC, we've been putting that together with all the young in the last several years, correct? And we do have a lot of rental items that come in, as you know, in the summertime. That is going to need additional work. The floor needs to be painted, HVAC has to be done. The sound system, we had it priced out. It's going to be roughly what you have in the fund right now from rentals. I think there's $12,000 something dollars, anything? No, I'm going to jump aside. It's 12 and change. So I think we'd be okay there with that. And then the paving. So that's an overview. And something, you know, the pricing, it's, and I know Fran will back when we say that, but John, you know, we still don't have pricing for that floor at the type of down. It's going to be, it's what, 5/8 flooring, John, versus three-quarter. So it's going to be a unique floor to replace. Insurance company has directed, John, that adjusted not to do anything. They're going after the roof when the roof was put on, and the engineering of the drainage system, to try to keep that money through now. And unfortunately, that got underneath the floor and came up. We never saw it. It didn't come down from the rooftop, it didn't come in through a side rain on windows. We've gotten obviously a large amount of rain this past season, and it came up under the floor through the double doors. So we're, we're on those topics. Any questions about any of those?
I have one question, or if I could, please. A few years ago, we, we gave you guys money for the water tower on Jerome?
Cooling tower?
Oh, the cooling tower, sorry. How, how will that play into the HBA system that needs to be replaced now? Like, will that need to be replaced again, or that'll stay?
The water tower works along with the chiller, and that goes the school itself. The gymnasium unit is a standalone system, it's not on the chiller system, it's not on the cooling tower. That's the design of the school. Because, as I say, that's a unit outside that we had been nursing along for years, Jerome Aris was working on that capacity, that goes to the gymnasium only.
Okay, so it's a separate system?
So separately.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions for the Board of Education?
Sounds...
Okay. All right.
If there's any questions that do come up before we come back, and I don't know, Rosa, you want to answer it, or through Michael, and you get to us, and we can come prepared. If there are certain things that you're requesting, like any of your spending with line item transfer, let us know before that next meeting, so we have documentation for you. That's all, all of you here, you don't care how it goes, so you, Rosa, or through Michael, but then just head it to us, and we'll, we'll get right back to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Okay, the next presentation is going to be from library.
Sorry. And thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Lauren Davis, library director. This is a very different space than we're used to. I'm joined by Carly Lamir, the assistant library director. Library. Oh, okay. Okay, okay. Carly's going to be my little wingman here, wingwoman, as we go through just a few of the highlights of our presentation. So, the library's fiscal year '24, '25 budget request reflects our continued commitment to providing exceptional service to the people of North Branford. We are proud to deliver a budget that does not compromise on service and affirms our commitment and confidence in our library system. It is a continuous task of the library team to see to it that the resources in this budget are applied appropriately and efficiently. You can advance the next one. That will allow us to accomplish four things. So first, we would like to satisfy the educational and cultural interests of our community with a focus on equity and access. Respond to the information needs of our community by creating an extensive...
She's having a hard time hearing you. Can you just speak into the microphone?
This one? Sorry. Kathleen, thank you, Kathleen. Okay. You don't want me to start again, do you? No? Okay.
You can put it up there for yourself.
So you don't have to feel like...
There you go. There you go. Is this better? Oh my, it is much better. Okay. I don't know if that's a good thing. Uh, the second priority is respond to the information needs of our community by providing access to an extensive collection of materials, creating a vital resource in our community for lifelong learning. Thirdly, develop and provide a safe and inviting space that allows us to bring our resources and services into the community. And lastly, support a friendly and knowledgeable staff that fosters that welcoming environment. Twenty twenty-three was a fantastic year for the North Branford Public Libraries. We had sixty-seven thousand total visitors to our two libraries who borrowed eighty-nine thousand items in print and fifteen thousand items electronically with four hundred and thirty, four hundred and thirty-nine new library cards registered. Over thirteen thousand people of all ages attended six hundred and sixteen free programs and activities that were focused on learning, growing, exploring, and creating. This budget request includes a three point seven percent increase over last year. Outside of contractual obligations, there are two priorities that we've identified in this budget that are driving that increase. Salaries. Salaries and related expenditures typically make up roughly seven, seventy-seven percent of the library's projected expenditures. There is an unknown factor this year with the salaries of our five full-time union members as their contract expires in June and a new one has not yet been negotiated. Our budget request also includes an increase in our library books account. This account contains all of the material added to our collections. So our print, our audio, our video, our digital, and our non-traditional. It is a smaller percentage of our overall budget, but it does include a twenty-three percent increase over last year. And we'll spend some time talking about that in a little bit. Our first priority of the two we're going to discuss tonight are the salaries of our part-time library workers. We've included in the planning and budget for next fiscal year a seven percent increase to the wages of our part-time library employees, including our two part-time library custodians. These fourteen part-time library staff members are motivated, dedicated employees who provide exceptional service and play an integral role in the functioning of our two libraries. I cannot stress that enough. Increasing their wages is not only a sign of appreciation of their hard work, but it closely aligns their salaries to those of other libraries in the area. We, we are a service organization and we must strive for continuous usage and improvement. Library workers are continuously educating themselves, continuously expanding their knowledge and upgrading their skills in order to keep up with the rate of change and evolve alongside our community. We are continuously developing and nurturing our rapport with the community so that we can build trust and better understand how to support their needs. Our personnel budget reflects our commitment to compensating our part-time workers respectfully by aligning their pay with the recommended salary guidelines published by the Connecticut Library Association. Those are the numbers that you're looking at your screen right there. In twenty twenty-one, Partis Larson Human Resources Consulting did a compensation benchmarking study. In October twenty twenty-three, those rates were updated with a cost of labor adjustment. So we're basically following the guidelines that have been published continuously for the last couple of years, adjusting it for a cost of labor adjustment. Our second priority that I want to discuss tonight are ebooks. Ebooks are a core library service and digital content must be accessible by all. Building a library around a collection of, building a library around the needs of a community is essential to a library's mission. This budget reflects a demand for service felt throughout our community by funding a virtual library that is robust and diverse, that is available twenty-four seven through our system-wide collections and subscription services. In fiscal year twenty twenty-three, digital checkouts by our patrons totaled thirteen thousand two ninety-eight, which was up from eleven thousand two thirty the prior fiscal year and fiscal year twenty twenty-two. This current fiscal year, we are tracking the same usage increase. From July through December twenty twenty-three, so just a little over six months ago, digital checkouts by our patrons totaled more than eighty-three hundred, up from sixty-three hundred the prior fiscal year in that same period during twenty twenty-two. So that's two thousand worth of checkouts this year compared to last year. As demand for materials and digital format has increased, we have tried to keep pace by increasing our spending on e-content. And while many libraries are embracing the digital format, it comes with a hefty price. Last year, our library spent eleven thousand five hundred and this year we are projected to spend sixteen thousand dollars on e-media. Yet long wait times persist for people to access library ebooks. We are budgeting seventeen thousand this year for ebook spending, but I have a feeling it still won't be enough. The ability to keep up with demand, resident demand is constrained by high pricing to libraries and publisher restrictions. Are libraries on own titles or are we only allowed to lease them for a certain amount of time? To make the library a viable option for our users, to keep wait times reasonable and to ensure everyone has access to our collection, we are made investing in our digital collection a priority this year. And that's the end of my presentation. Those are the two priorities that we wanted to stress because I think they have the biggest impact increases this year. But I am certainly happy to go over any other accounts in mind. You have to say that.
No, you do a job.
Does anyone have any questions for Lauren?
Good stuff, Lauren. So looking back on your last slide about the hoopla and the online and the cost increases. I mean, I, I use hoopla myself. I think it's a great program and stuff. But with those cost increases, are there other vendors out there that provide the same service? Or are you just kind of stuck with what they charge?
We are almost held hostage by two major vendors, Overdrive and Hoopla. They have kind of cornered the ebook market for libraries. They are two very different models. Hoopla is a cost per circ, so for every checkout we get charged, but it's an on-demand. So what you see is what you get. Overdrive has a similar model to a regular library, lending library, where you have to wait long times. And that collection is a little bit different than the Hoopla collection, but we really only have two options when it comes to ebooks, the Overdrive and the Hoopla.
Thank you.
Oh, good job.
Well, you guys are using on us. Thank you. All right, we're going to go with anything. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do a great job, dude.
They do, they really do.
Libraries are, they're really, they're all stars. Yeah.
Okay, so now we are headed into Public Works. So as soon as Danny gets all set up here. They lost my support.
Delicious. Yep. See it over there, see it in front of you too. Okay, cool.
You know, Craig, Craig and Ron.
Well, Framarola, Public Works Director, Dan Solantano, Assistant Director of Public Works, and Victor Benny, obviously, he's our town engineer. I'm not staying here. I've been training Danny on how to do PowerPoint. I know this is his second year, but I've been, you know, we've been really grinding this into him, so. And one other thing, Budget 101, you never follow the library. You never follow the library. So on that, I'm going to turn it over to.
Well, they got us back on schedule though.
Yeah, I know.
They did. They made up the time.
Turn it over to Danny and Victor.
All right.
Be up here in a second, hopefully. There it is, from today. Whoa, what did I just do? Oh, there we go. Nope, we're good. Yeah. All right. All right, Dan Solantano, Assistant Public Works Director. I'm going to present our twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Moving into our first slide, very briefly, who we are. We consist of five different divisions, road maintenance, grounds maintenance, building maintenance, fleet maintenance, and tree maintenance divisions. Who we support? We support every department in town just about, whether it be border bed, maintaining their ground, striping their fields, library rec, Poco Fest setting up for events, police and fire assisting with road closures, town hall in many ways as well. I forgot to put the food bank up there. We do many pickups for the food bank throughout the year. So we are out there and we do, we do try and support everybody. Jumping into our operating budget, we are currently at a two million eight oh one four thirty-eight, proposing a two million nine forty-three five oh three. Overall proposed increase was five point seven percent at a hundred forty-two thousand and sixty-five dollars. After meeting and deliberating with Mike about our budget, we ended up at a three point six four percent increase, which is a hundred and two thousand sixty-five dollars. That's in yellow there. So that is our final proposed increase there. Moving into our first category, Personnel Services, and this kind of follows suit with our, our budget. We're currently at a two million eighty-five seven ninety-one, proposed a two million one forty-three three fifty-two, which is a fifty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-one dollar increase. Those increase consists of, the first line item is the full-time line item at thirty-six thousand five hundred twenty dollars. This is contractual, the salaries. Second increase is eight thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars to seasonal help and part-time. This consists of two pieces, seasonal help. We brought the rate from fifteen dollars an hour to sixteen dollars an hour to keep up with, try and stay ahead of minimum wage. Part-time, we have a newer part-time mechanic. We brought from the entry level mechanic rate to the mechanic rate. That's just a past practice that we do with the part-timers, the part-time mechanics at least. Overtime for a thousand four hundred and eighteen dollar increase. That's kind of relevant to the contractual increase. If they get it, an increase on their base salary, it, it falls into the overtime as well. A three hundred fifty-one dollar increase on miscellaneous earnings. That's the same thing. It's relevant in relation to unused vacation time payout, up to a week, which we already, we budget that lightly anyways because not everybody takes it. Next increase is forty-one hundred and two dollars to the employer's social security match. Same thing, it's relevant to the contractual increase along with the retirement contributions there at the end. Thirty-eight, thirty-nine. That's just percentage-wise relevant to the increases as well. Are there any questions on Personnel Services before I move on? So Materials and Supplies, we are currently at four twenty-two one forty-five. We proposed a four sixty-four nine fifty-five, which was a forty-two thousand eight hundred and ten dollar increase. After meeting with Mike and deliberating with him as well, we brought that down to a twenty-two thousand eight hundred and ten dollar increase, which is the final proposed number there. Five twenty-five increase to agricultural supplies, that's your seed, fertilizer, things of that nature. And that is just for the parks and rec townside. Border Bed buys their own fertilizer and seed and everything. Fifty thousand sixty-two dollar increase to construction materials. This was two parts. I'll head on part number two first. That was a one thousand sixty-two dollar inflation of products. That's your stone, asphalt, concrete, rebar, materials like that. Part one was a forty-nine thousand dollar reappropriation that was cut from salt last year. So we, we cut forty-nine thousand last year out of the salt budget. We were proposing to bring it back and we ended up bringing back, you'll see in yellow there, we took twenty out. So we brought, we're twenty-nine thousand dollars closer to where we were in the past. So it is, we're, we're up. Eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollar increase to heating fuel. This is the new five bay garage. This is a kind of a one-time increase because we just built the garage, so it's a one-time spike. I'm hoping that it actually is less than that. We estimated that number based on our ten, our ten bay garage next to it. But this one is a lot newer, hopefully more efficient, so I'm hoping that it's not quite that much. But it's in there as a placeholder for now. The last one here is nineteen thousand twenty-seven dollar decrease to motor fuel and lubricants. And then in green, you'll see shifted to vehicle maintenance under contractual services. That was just a shift. We had an empty line item on the next, in the next category. And during our budget, talking with Anthony, we ended up shifting it over to that empty line item. That's why it's in green and you'll see it in green on the next slide, so. So that is. Any questions on Materials and Supplies?
Why was the, why would the increase be a one-time thing possibly?
So we added a five bay garage. We added a garage, so you're adding another eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to heat it. So now it's a one-time spike increase. You still may have one percent next year or whatever, wherever our propane prices end up. But, but we added, we added square footage.
But the eleven thousand's not going away.
No, it's not going away. But I'm not going to come back with another eleven thousand.
It'll be flat, it should be flat or close to flat.
Yeah.
The way you said it, how it was just a one-time thing, I was kind of.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not going away, no. I wish it was going away. But the nineteen eighty-eight max might not start if we turn the heat off, so.
Right, I didn't understand it.
Thank you though, good questions. So Contractual Services, we're currently at a two ninety-three five oh two, proposed a three thirty-five one ninety-six, which was an increase of forty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars. After meeting with Mike and Anthony there as well, we ended up at a twenty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollar increase consisting of, first was our telephone line item, which is actually telephone cable and internet at six hundred dollars. This should be reducing greatly in the future if and when our fiber ever goes into place there. And then we may look into some alternatives with the cable as well because we only use cable for the weather a couple of months a year. Twenty-three hundred dollar increase to utilities. Once again, not one-time spike, but that's, that's a spike for the new five bay garage. There's that green fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollar increase that was shifted.
So that has something to do with the, the unit system, the way the line items work? So we took it out of one account and moved it into another account? That's all that is? You know what I mean? It was just a different lot, the way it's been deployed, kind of the line. Anthony, you can probably say that. We just took the money out and we moved it down.
Yeah, it was the lubricants, the oil, the coolant, all that, that stuff there. Hundred dollar increase to equipment rental. That's for our specialty tool rental. And twenty-three thousand forty-two dollar increase to other contractual. A little history with this, we had thirty thousand dollars in our brush grinding account. Last year, we brought it down to ten thousand. We were proposing to bring it back up to the thirty, but we, we ended up just keeping it at the ten. We feel that we could work with that for now and, you know, we're trying to be a team player somewhere here. So that's, that's the spot we'll just keep level. Are there any questions on Contractual Services? So moving on to Capital. Capital, we originally proposed a three eighty-eight seven eighty-seven to our equipment reserve. After deliberating with Mike, we ended up at a two eighteen seven eighty-seven. So the first one, replacement of truck twenty-five, lease payment two of three at one oh four eight thirty. This truck is currently being built. We're married to that payment, obviously, because it's a lease payment. Same with the second one here, replacement of truck thirty-seven. That is number three out of three, so that's getting wiped off after this year. We're married to that and we received that Poco Week this past year. We're married to that and we received that Poco Week this past, uh, year. So we're, we're receiving the trucks pretty close to their third lease payment. Um, in yellow there, you'll see replace roadside mower nineteen eighty-six. That's what we currently, um, have cut at this point and we'll get into that in the next slide. Grounds and other equipment, we're looking for an athletic field striping machine, uh, replacement upgrade. We currently have two strippers right now. Um, one is about seven or eight years old, one's well over twenty. It's definitely a, a product that you need two of, 'cause if the striper goes down, they are temperamental. The football fields have to get striped and, and the field, so. And that is primarily, they're only used for, um, the rec fields and the board of education fields. Are there any questions on that equipment reserve?
So I'm, I'm assuming those are like dump trucks, Dan, or?
Yeah, those are the lane, yeah, main plow trucks, yeah. We have ten roots and eleven trucks, so one backup.
Okay.
So why are we asking to replace our roadside mower? Um, are currently, you'll see the bottom right picture is our nineteen eighty-six four fifty-six ten that happened to be in the shop when I went out to look for it. Um, it's getting repaired there. Um, aged equipment, it's getting harder to obtain parts for increased maintenance and repair. Um, current, our current roadside mowers, right now, we have two on the road, a nineteen ninety-nine over the guardrail boomer and then our nineteen eighty-six side flail, so we're trying to stagger out those replacements. Um, the nineteen ninety-nine at this point in time is running and we're gonna, we're gonna keep going as well. Bottom left is a picture of the proposed replacement. Obviously, you can see there's a cab on it. That's the way all municipalities are going now. It's a lot safer of a machine between, um, whacking the bees' nest and all you have to do is tap a dead tree and a branch comes flying down at you, so. That's where we're looking to go. Yeah.
I know the, the, these items are older, like the eighty-six Ford obviously is, is dated, but it has still some value in a, it's probably the private world. Would you look to sell this and then recoup some dollars or how do, what goes on with stuff like this? Like, you know, machines like this?
Yeah, absolutely. So we either, yeah, we sell them through a, a public surplus website or a lot of times the vehicles will send to an equipment auction, 'cause they pull more money at an equipment auction. But yeah, we would sell it, you know. A farmer may buy it to run around his hundred acre cornfield and, you know, things like that. So we would recoup money on it, yeah, absolutely.
Do we have a, um, a, a program for, um, town assets?
As for?
Selling them or what, what we do with them? Is, is there a, a?
So we, we, ninety-nine percent of the time, we send them up to the auction.
Right, I was just asking, do we have a, a, a policy of some sort?
Right, um, as far as the proceeds?
As far as, you know, what, what, what do, what is, what is?
Procedure?
Their procedure to remove something from service and, and, you know, and, and either sell it, junk it, whatever. Is there a po, a po, a policy? That's what I'm asking.
Yes, so, uh, what we do is any department, public works or any other department that has, um, items that are designated for surplus, they'll send a letter over to me asking for it to be designated as surplus. I'll prove it, send it to the finance director and the finance director arranges for it to be, uh, auctioned off and we recoup the money. Get fair market value.
Right, 'cause I'm sure on the, on the book, Anthony, there's probably a va, there could be a value, a book value that's gotta be removed.
Right.
Right, okay.
Correct.
As far as the proceeds, the way it works too is if it's a general fund asset, general fund gets the revenue. But if the original expenditure came out of, let's say, the public works reserve, the money goes back into that reserve when the thing is sold.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, so that's how we do it with the, the equipment, the trucks and, you know, one day we hope to look for, you know, down the road, maybe one day we could have, uh, sinking funds for this type of thing and have the eleven trucks staggered out that they last however many years and, you know, budget appropriately, but. As of now, you know, we, we kinda stagger it. We'll try and do a truck one year, equipment the next year and, and stagger them out, so. Um, the second piece to capital and last piece is our twenty-five thousand dollars a year for our small, uh, equipment, small tool reserve. That's been a pretty much annual, um, item we've been doing. It's for the, um, maintenance, replacement and, um, obtaining of small equipment and tools. This next one here is the office, um, addition and remodel at one point two million. This, I know was, the, the price was kicked around all over the place, so when we had the phase one design done, the architect verbally gave us a price of, I forgot what, four hundred dollars a square foot. You know, times the square foot we were asking for, it was coming in just shy of a million. Then during the second, uh, construction phase of the documents, they gave us a hard written-out estimate down to the, the paint and, um, it came in just about at one point two million. So that's where we're at with that. Are there any questions on that before I could, I'll move into this? I know we, we've all probably seen this before. So, you know, our current issues, tree, highway, grounds leaders have no permanent office. They're currently in a temporary trailer out back. It's a fifty-dollar tin can that we bought, believe it or not. Lack of meeting space for management to meet with division leaders and outside vendors. Twenty employees sharing one single bathroom plus subcontractors at times, that's a key point there. Lack of locker room space and changing area, there's pretty, pretty much nothing there. Overview of project, the addition would create, uh, the following rooms, director's office, assistant director, public work secretary, meeting room, office, storage and two bathrooms. The existing space would be renovated to provide the following, uh, men's and women's locker rooms, men's and women's bathrooms and create a mechanics office with division leader cubicle space. The division leaders, they're, they're the, they're the boots on the ground, so they're only in their office at the beginning of the day and the end of the day with, uh, handling work orders, so. You know, I, I won't get too deep into the floor plan here. I know we, we've all seen this. Are there any questions or comments in relation to this? At one point, I'll make two. I know the one point two million speaking with Anthony, we may have to go a hair higher than that if it's bonded just to figure in for those, those costs. I know they had something built in the estimate, I don't know if it's quite enough, but they did have money built in there, so. This is a one-story building, so to the left of the screen, you'll see the, pretty much split down the middle. To the left is existing space, to the right where it shows the darker outlines, that's the addition that we're proposing. We, we really want it to stay away from two-story, 'cause you could start getting involved with elevators and, and it, the, the price goes up big time, so. If there's no other questions, I'll turn it over to Victor Benny for our pavement management. And thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, we really, really are saving the best for last. Everybody excited about pavement management? So I, I, I think starting out, uh, the number that you're most likely gonna wanna, the cursor doesn't, okay. Number you're most likely gonna wanna hear is how much are we asking for from the actual budget funds? And the proposal tonight for that, if you check the, that fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five column down under funding is, uh, under budget funds from the town would be three hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. So again, the, we've been trying to stick with, with this five-year plan with about a million dollars a year in spending that we dedicate towards the, the paving projects, so. The bot, again, at the bottom of that twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see that after we get through muni grants and aid at three hundred and one thousand dollars, uh, town aid road money coming in at two hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars, our proposal for the paving program this, uh, coming year would be nine hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Following forward through, uh, the next three fiscal years, you'll see that again, we're keeping it at around a million dollars a year and our, our request for the program, uh, again, around four hundred thousand dollars a year for, from town budget funds. And I've also included some inflation rates in there. I mean, three percent a year may not be quite as, uh, quite enough for, for what we're seeing out there as far as inflation goes, but that's what I plugged into the program. Um, under fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, you'll see that out of the seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, we're well on our way to, uh, completing, uh, our projects and accomplishing, basically zeroing out all of our spending for that, for that fiscal year, for this year that we're still in. We still have two more paving projects in the books at, uh, Old Turnpike. Uh, at, at least the, uh, the eastern side of Old Turnpike Road off of, uh, Village Street and also over at Enterprise Drive, both of those being a reclaim and repave projects. Um, I can point out, I know we've thrown a lot of numbers over at here in a little bit amount of time, just wanted to point out again that, again, that yellow highlight there for total miles of road that we have in town is about seventy-seven miles of road. So you can imagine that with the amount of spending that we have, it's hard to, uh, you, you know, to do something on every road. A lot of people come in and, and we can tell them about the five-year program and, and how we're splitting things up and we have different things we're doing, crack seal, chip seal, mill and pave, uh, reclaim and pave projects. What's the question they immediately ask? What, what, when do you pave my road? So you know, that, that becomes a, a, a tough question to answer sometimes when you say, well, we're not doing anything for, on, on a good portion of roads and, and this year, the, the deferred maintenance for the year coming up would be twenty-seven miles worth of road that we're not planning on doing anything on. They're, they're not in need of anything. They've been cracked sealed or they've been, uh, previously paved or sealed over the past year, so there's not really any need to do anything to those roads. Um, every year I do a, uh, a grading of all the, the town roads. Um, this year, the pavement condition rating, that's in the bottom left-hand corner in blue, went up about just over three points, um, from, from around, or we're at around seventy-six point eight out of a hundred. So it's been going up slowly over the past, uh, three years. Uh, we've been doing a lot of work though, so as we do work, the, each of those roads that we do work on uh, improve in the point system. We can show improvements this, this coming year. We don't have quite as much planned as, and not quite as much of a spread for work, so I'm thinking that number might stay flat for the grading for, for next year. So this, this was just a, uh, an example of a scoring system that I use. So again, I'm going around, I, I put an eye to the road and figure out what condition it is, look at what the, the point spread was from last year and, and figure out, you know, if there's anything we need to do on the road and obviously bring it to Fran and Dan to give them, you know, a, kind of a, a vote in the process to see what we do on, on which roads. Uh, this, this is another great chart that I usually like to point out. From our, our simplest thing we can do, crack sealing at eleven thousand one hundred dollars a mile, so for every mile of road that we crack seal, we expect to pay that much money. Going right, right down to the, near the middle of the chart, mill and overlay or pavement overlay has been a, a popular thing we've been looking toward lately at three hundred and ten thousand dollars a mile. So you can see right down to the reclaim and overlay, which again are those two projects coming up this spring. We expect those to come in at about five hundred thousand, uh, dollars a mile. Obviously, we're doing less than a mile of roadwork, but that's our, our pricing structure that we're working with. Um, again, just to give you an idea of, uh, the, the crack sealing operation, one of the more popular things that we do and something that we can depe, depend on to give the roads some more longevity before we have to throw the bigger money into the projects. We had a couple mill and pavement overlay projects last spring that we worked on pretty early in the, uh, the pave, during paving season. This is the finished product at Lober Place in Frederick Street, moving just down the road to Wildwood Road. You see the picture on the left is the pre-picture, the, the picture during the milling operation after public works replaced the catch basin tops. The picture to the right again is the finished product with the new pavement, new curbing and seeding, uh, looks like it was successful there. Onto one of our cold-in-place projects. I wanted to point this, uh, project out just to give you an idea that a lot of these roads we show up to, we take a walk of, on the road and realize, oh gosh, what, what's going on over here off the edge of the road? We've got some drainage issues and, and a little structural repair that, uh, needed to be considered before. This is, uh, Lower Beach Street, the set, section between Sea Hill Road and Foxen, Foxen Road. Um, there was a section of corrugated metal pipe. I mean, anytime we hear, anytime public works hears corrugated metal pipe, they cringe because th, these are older pipe sections that are typically replaced with concrete and this is what they look like. I mean, it's not the process of peeling it out of the ground that did this. When you peel it out of the ground or pull it out of the ground, it, it really turns into almost like a paper mache material is what's left over. It's structurally seems to hold together underground, but there's not much left holding these pipes together. So when we come through on a road like this and, and find out that we're gonna put that amount of money into it for a repair, we say, well, we don't wanna be digging a pipe a year or two later that collapses and fails. So these types of projects, these drainage projects along the way become, you, you know, additions in, uh, cost to these, to these types of projects. Onto, uh, Juror's Lane, this was our full-depth reclaim project. And again, the picture to the left was a great, I, I thought a great shot. I'm not even a photographer, but I, I guess I caught the perfect cloud cover there. But you can see, we're literally pulverizing the pavement and re-grading it in place to a new road base, to the picture to the right with new drainage, new pavement, new curves and seeding, uh, still hopefully taking place and successful this summer. Again, this, this roadway required quite an extensive drainage project, which you kinda get an idea in the middle there. It wasn't just as easy as going in and, and reclaiming and paving. So on again to this, uh, fiscal year, you see in blue in that column, the projects we have proposed for crack seal, mill and pave, mill and pave, reclaim and overlay and a reconstruction project. The, the big number just below, it's not in blue, is, um, the drainage, patch pave and special project at a hundred and forty thousand dollars. We're really up against a, a new, if I use the word climate, maybe it's used on purpose, but a new climate of, uh, things happening almost on a daily basis. I know Dan and Fran can agree with me that each of us are getting multiple calls a week, if not calls every day about drainage, uh, repairs, uh, things that need to be looked into. A lot of times we can go out to these individual sites and respond to residents and say, you know, it's, it's mother nature, it's raining a lot, the system's handling what it can handle. But there's other times where we find problems that have basically gone unnoticed because the amount of rain that we're getting now just is putting these systems at a, a point to where they're almost incapacitated and, you know, we, we find some problems and every one of those problems eventually needs to be addressed and there's, there's gonna be over the next course of this, uh, construction season quite a few of these drainage projects that we're hoping to get to and they're, even though they're smaller dollar, uh, projects, each of these structures that we repair, pipes that get replaced or, uh, you know, jetting and cleaning systems has a dollar value attached to it. Um, again, down below in the lighter orange color, the, the number that, the budget fund number we're requre, requesting at three hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. I'm gonna skip the pie chart, 'cause I feel like the library beat me to it and did a much better job with theirs, but uh, again, the two bigger, the two bigger points here is the thirty-six miles of, if I can get my, I said I was gonna skip it, of, of crack seal that we're planning on doing this uh, paving season and the deferred maintenance is the other portion of it. So, you know, again, you get an idea that those, those other projects don't take up much mileage, but they are roads that are ready for those, you know, that, that bigger type of project, the, the bigger need. Um, and I'll end with any questions.
Juror's Lane.
Yeah.
Why did it look like it was, uh, like some sort of gravel on, on there?
The actual, the left-hand picture?
Well, yeah, the right, well, for me, the right-hand picture, yeah.
Which, what do you mean?
The one all the way on the right.
That's the new pavement, right?
That's, that's the pavement, uh, to the right.
Right, that, but it looks like gravel to me.
Yeah, the camera picked up the, so, so it's a, uh, it's not as, as fine of a, a, like a, it's the class pavement that we use. It's a little bit larger stone, it's a little bit more durable.
So that's not loose?
That's not, no, that's not loose at all.
Nice, second question is, um, if you go back to your slide where you're spending money on whatever versions of, yeah, that one. So, um, why aren't you doing any, uh, chip seal?
So we had a few roads this year that we were proposing for chip seal and it wasn't, I think there were five roads and, uh, two different sections of town, bit subdivisions basically, I'll say, that it really wasn't a, a big enough package. We talked about it, it wasn't a big enough package of chip seal to put together, so we pushed. They're prepped for chip seal as far as being crack sealed and ready to go, so they'll, they'll obviously hold together another season and we pushed them into next year's package, which I think between chip seal and rubber chip next year, which are both on there, we're at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars each for each of those types of projects, yeah.
So how, whatever whatever process you used on La Silet Way, you should absolutely reconsider that in doing it in that type of road.
Right.
Because it's been swept twice and it's it's still loose. So what happens is it comes in people's driveways, onto their hardwood floors, and it just creates a bit of havoc. That's uh I'm solely on it, you know, clearly unintentional, but that's what's happening with that type, that product.
Right, yeah, we, I mean, we had, we do get those types of calls too and it's it's kind of, I I want to say the the nature of that type of application. I know I've been talking to Fran and Dan and Fran did mention that I think we'll be moving towards a little bit different type of a chip seal process that includes a s- a smaller chip and hopefully that locks everything and it's something that he said he feels a little bit more comfortable and maybe getting back to what what we used to do on some of the other roads that we've chip sealed on over the years. How did I, seven, seven after? Sorry?
Ten percent of your budget comes off every minute.
It's okay. You were, you, you get a little longer because you were with Public Works.
Okay, thank you.
Now, before you leave, this is not related to your budget for next year, but just do you have an update on the bridge, the the ARPA money we gave you for bridges? Like, where are we on?
Yes.
Did we do any?
We did, we did not yet. We couldn't do anything over the winter because we need the paving uh plants to open back up and that. That was the the plan um as far as obviously when we were gonna do the bridges. The same company that's doing the bridges is also working right now in the Lanes Pond Stormwater Repair and we've already been talking about them. It it looks like but we've already been talking to them and it looks like they're interested and and I'm hoping that they're moving right to those bridge projects um very soon. I believe pavement plants are open already, yeah. Can tell by the truck traffic over at Tilcon, so not sure. Oh, yeah, we'll be, I'm I'm thinking if we're not doing one at a time, we may be doing two at a, two at a time and and rolling right through them, through the through the spring here and and getting them done one by one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a list of of the roads that you're doing, like what different things that you're doing in this season?
That for this upcoming paving season? I do.
Is something you could share with us? You don't have to throw it up there. I'm just saying it's something you can share with.
I don't, I don't think I have it to throw up there. I thought I did. Oh, because I knew you were gonna ask that question. Is it, is it something that you want me to get to? I I mean, I could run, I could run down the list. Ja- Jackson, so we're doing the subdivision over at Dogwood Lane, Jackson Lane and Robin Lane. There's gonna be a significant um should be a significant drainage structural and and pipe network improvement there. The Mansfield Drive, which is one of our bridge repairs for the second half of Mansfield Drive will be milled and fit, we call it mill and fill, mill and pave. And over at, I I guess I could say the Williams Road subdivision off of Totucket Road is one that that main road in, Williams Road is in the condition where a mill and fill is appropriate. We may be looking at a uh a another type of uh system there. It's called an Anova chip, which is similar to, it's a, it's an overlay product with a an emulsion that goes down below it. The other roads in that subdivision would also receive one of those two applications. And it, I mean, if I said that's it, besides crack seal and the drainage uh numbers that that I showed you, if I said that's it, you you'd also see that that's over half of almost three quarters of the budget for those roads. Those are the more more robust types of uh improvements that we we make on roads. And when there's that many roads, it starts to easily add up.
So I, since I know that area, that's why I'm asking you this. What's the the process? I mean, you're you're gonna have to go into public property, I'm assuming, to mitigate that water. It's significant water coming off of, I guess, what we consider Totucket Mountain and the and the waterfall behind there. Um, what what happens? You have to basically create new basins and they're not there now?
So there's already a structural uh network there.
Okay.
Catch basins at at the low point, catch basins in the pipe network and the newer part of the subdivision also uh added on some of those. So it's basically a pro, I mean, you can look at it where water already hits the pavement and ends up in those structures. We're just gonna get it into the structures, a a newer structure system a little bit sooner. So it's it's basic, basically that spider web extension of the network that's there to reach a little bit deeper into the subdivision to catch things before it becomes such an overwhelming flow, before it hits that existing system. And and along the way, I think we're also, I mean, we're looking at obviously structural uh tops, the the catch basin top replacements. I think we've already determined there's a concrete RCP, uh concrete pipe in the ground, at least on the Robin Lane section, so that should be, uh, we're hoping that's stable enough. And then we have to to check into the pipe network through the rest of the subdivision. Obviously, if it's the the metal pipe that I showed you, it's something that we'll look into. Um, you know, its integrity and possibly replacing it, so it's about it.
And then one more question. Last year, we talked about some significant issues on BlueJag to do with uh with the sewer there. Any issues like that that we perceive popping up or something that we know about?
Well, with with the sewer, you know, that was one of those unfore- foreseen things with the sewer line, so that that was repaired and and nothing else new has popped up from the
Good.
the sewer perspective, but um it is, it continues to be on my radar and will be on my uh October-ish budget for the sewer system that that whole White Hollow sewer network needs to be looked into from a infiltration and standpoint, there's there's some groundwater getting into the system and we especially see it during these higher rain events, so it's one of those projects that I'm I'm looking into to try to, try to correct that.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
I just like, I just like to say thank you for continuing to do a a great job in town. Um, there's definitely some roads up near me that were done last year. You guys used that cold in place thing and I know you had some issues with it, but you I mean, you rectified it beautifully. The roads look great up there. Um, I also noticed that uh in these past few storms, uh and I'm gonna attribute it to the tree work set to being done in town. Uh, I think you guys are doing an excellent job with that. I definitely think there's been, at least for me anyhow, there's been a lot less outages um because of the tree work. Um, and uh we don't get, we didn't get that much snow this year, but every time we have a snowstorm, you can tell as soon as you drive out of North Branford into another town because our roads are done so much better. So I just wanted to say it's definitely worth noticing or or uh bringing up. Thank you very much for all the hard work that you guys do. It's, it is definitely noticeable and it's appreciated.
Yeah, de- definitely. I I'd say, uh, you know, that's more, I think, to direct it at Public Works and and if uh, you have to say boots on the ground on a lot of these projects involves a lot, it's not just, th- there is, there isn't our contractors doing the main work, but a lot of the orchestration of all this is also Public Works both, you know, both ahead of time with some of the repairs that are getting done and the the prep work. There's an immense amount of prep prep work that goes into a lot of these projects and that's all Public Works, you know, contributing to the success of that right down to, you know, the the operation of the actual process of the day the road's getting ground up, the day it's getting paved. There's multiple Public Works uh crew and equipment on site too that are making sure that everything gets done up up to snuff. And I know, you know, obviously Fran is overseeing that, but I see uh I see Dan's truck there every time I try to drive by and take a look at how things are going, so it's a well, well-oiled system that they have there. I'm just, I'm just going cross-eyed with the paperwork. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is questions on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um, I just have one, Anthony, and I know you've been working on this and it relates to the email that Scott sent us in regards to funding for some of his projects and it's the solar credits. Have we, what's the status and how is that working?
Uh, well, that's a good question. The history on that is kind of all over the board. The process started in December of twenty-two. It went live. We didn't get our first bill until November of twenty-three. Out of the blue, the bills came from Altus, the company that's managing the product, uh, the project. Uh, subsequently, the bills came in from Altus, but we never got the credits from UI, which were gonna offset those payments. Uh, so we did not, it, in fact, and recently, yes, today, the Board of Ed paid for the December of twenty-two and January of twenty-three bill. We have not paid ours yet, our piece. Uh, so the, to answer your question is, the final number, I don't know. We built in an estimate in our townside budget of roughly fifty-six thousand dollars of credit. That's taking, we took the half-year credit that we got through uh June thirty, doubled it for a full year and then took seventy-five percent as a cushion and applied that to our portion of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So, yeah, again, roughly sixty thousand dollars of credit on our side. The Board of Ed obviously had the larger accounts with the high school and the auditorium and MBIS and Jerome. Uh, I'm not sure they finalized their numbers yet. I have on my sheet what I believe their numbers are gonna be, but I can share that with you.
So is it, so originally, when this was all presented to the council, it was it would be credits off of the you, the electric bill. So like if you're billed, you know, ten thousand dollars a month from UI and you had eight thousand dollars in credit, you would owe a net of two thousand. Is that how it's working or is it?
Part A, yes. You would owe two thousand to UI, but then Altus that owns the solar project is billing us at eleven point nine five cent per kilowatt hour as per the agreement that was signed. So there's, there's multiple pieces. There's a credit on the UI bills, correct. To further complicate it, when this whole thing started back in twenty-twenty-two, we had to, in order for Altus to get access to our bills for UI, to bill us their portion, we had a question. We had to say to UI, okay, we'll give, Altus would have access to our account. Well, in doing that, what UI did was only one person could have access to the accounts. So all those credits that we're waiting for, we'd ever had access to our UI account because Altus had cre- access to the UI accounts to be able to get the kilowatt hours to bill us for their piece. So it's, it's a convoluted mess. The process logistically is not in place yet properly, how we're gonna manage this. Um, I can get a number for you as to what the June thirty amount of the credits on both sides.
June thirty of
Twenty-three.
Of twenty-three.
Right, I mean, I I I can.
Well, no, I was just wondering because at the Board of Ed meeting last week,
Right.
Scott threw out a number of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so.
It could, it could be. And the problem that they're
I just wanted to, are we up that high?
It, I'll, I'll verify the number. The the issue that they're gonna have, that they're contemplating is June thirty, basically the year is over. So we're gonna say to them, okay, you're gonna get X amount of credit on your account between the combination of the Altus bills and the UI credits to go back to fiscal twenty-three. Well, they're like, what, that's already closed. We can't spend that money. So the conversation has been, okay, well, if you have this credit, for lack of a better word, that you're gonna get as of June thirty, twenty-three, perhaps you can petition the council and say, put that into my two percent fund. They're like, we're gonna lose that money. I'm like, well, you're gonna lose it just based on the fact that mechanically this hasn't come into place yet. Legitimately, it's their money. So that's, I think, what what the conversation they're they're leaning towards is, once we determine what the amount for at least the June thirty number is, come to you folks and say, hey, again, I love a two hundred thousand, I don't remember the exact number, but whatever the number is, instead of that just falling back to the fund balance because it was our we'd get the numbers in time, can that be rolled into the two percent fund?
Yeah, but the whole idea was that it was going to reduce
Right.
the budget. So whether it's on the town side or the Board of Ed side,
Right.
if we give it to them in Fund twenty-five, it's not reducing any budget. It's giving them more money to spend.
Not really, because they've already spent the money.
Yeah.
They've already paid the bill, so they were just crediting back. They're just putting it in a, in a, in a fund.
Right.
So we're not giving them anything. We're ju- they're just getting the money back that they've spent. They've already spent the money.
Right.
I heard it was three hundred thousand.
As I recall the presentations we we received, it was, we would get a credit for approximately ninety-three thousand dollars, so some, something like that.
Between a hundred and a hundred twenty thousand.
Right. I just remember a ninety-three. And and um I don't recall it being explained on the, 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 this type of bill.
Right.
I don't.
No.
This never came up.
So Altus has the?
Altus, I think, is owner of the complex.
Right, and they have access to the UI bills?
They did until I put a stop to it. Because I, I need to have access to the bills
Right.
to get the bills, to see what our credits are. And that, that was the dilemma we had. Okay, here's Altus sending me a bill and like November, the bills came in, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly. There's, there's solar aid, so there's two different solar projects running over there. I said, well, you may be entitled to a hundred and fifty, but I'm entitled to credits. And I can't get the credits because you have access to my account. So we rescinded that approval, so now we're getting access to our account. Hasn't been finalized yet, hasn't been, haven't got the a- access yet. But we're gonna get access to our, back to our account, so we'll get the credits.
See, but you have to go back to twenty, when it started.
Yeah, well.
Is it possible that we?
Some, and some is last year. That's where the dilemma is. Some of it is
That's the money that the Board of Ed had spent. It's the, it's a year's worth of payments.
Well, no, it's not a year.
Yeah, but six months.
But hold on a second. Is this, is it possible for us to pay whatever, what's it?
Altus.
Altus? More money than we get for credit?
Negative.
Okay.
The numbers are definitely in our favor.
Okay, because it, because that, that was never, yeah, okay, good.
This whole, this whole thing, like you said, that girl, uh Cello that came, made the presentations years ago, it, the logistics were never, never defined.
So Anthony, Anthony, to simplify it, how much are we taking in? How much are we benefiting a month from that solars?
Uh, hang on, let me find that.
You know, roughly, what, or what is the benefit?
There, there is, there is real money.
The solar always benefits the people that put up the solar, not the people that actually have it.
Keep talking. I'll, I'll look for my spreadsheet.
It's benefiting them.
Well, it's okay. You can have it for Tuesday's meeting.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's fine. I just wanted to know if
Yep.
where we were at, if, if we had any resolution.
No. Well, that's, that's because Anthony gave all the authority away.
Yeah, well.
That, that was, that was the deal, like, oh, we need to have access to your accounts. Okay, good. Well, I, in my world, I would think we both can have access. You can access for your purpose. I need access for my purpose.
Right.
But not someone UI said, no, you gave them access. It's one or none. I'm like, that makes no sense.
Sounds like a good business deal.
Yeah. So in so, in, in solar project, again, there's, there's a and a B aspect of this. Through June thirty, we are gonna get credits of a hundred and ninety-two and change and only pay out seventy-seven roughly. So, again, that's combined between town and board. That's
For the year?
Uh, that's for six months.
That's June thirty, that's
Uh, June thirty of twenty-three. Correct.
And it just went on board in like December twenty-two.
We're gonna get a credit of what? Uh, stamp, hang on, a hundred and seventy-two?
It's about a hundred fifteen thousand.
The net, yeah.
The net.
But it's, but it's, that's a combo of Board of Ed and
Board of Ed and town.
It's total credit.
Correct, because again, the, the
Of one fifty-two, you said?
One fifteen.
One fifteen. So what's the percentage that's going to the Board of Ed?
Well, it's based on, it's individual counts. It's based on, I could pluck out.
So we didn't do a percentage, we just
It's based, no, it's the, they get the Jerome Harris and, yeah. So on solar B, which solar B, again, there's two projects there. Through uh June thirty, one nine, that was one escape, was it? One ninety-three and seventy-eight? That sounds familiar. Solar rate, one ninety-two and, yeah, it's about the same. One ninety-two and seventy, one ninety-two credits, seventy-seven coming back.
So it's like two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's for six months.
For six months.
Yeah.
And what do we have to pay them? You said we have to pay them back, though.
Well, that's the, the seventy-six is the pay to Altus and the one ninety-two is what we're getting credit from UI. So I mean, it's, it's a winner. No doubt about it. It's a winner for us. It's real money. It's just the logistics of how this paperwork is supposed to flow hasn't, you know, been ironed out yet and and the girl with Altus has been super patient because, you know, she's entitled to the money going back to last December. So, you know, she knows we're trying to get this squared away. And again, the email that Lori sent at the Board of Ed today was that she had just processed the December of twenty-two and January of twenty-three payments, at least to get some money flowing to them. Because they're obviously entitled to it. There was a contract that was signed and that's what the provision and that's what the provision calls for, the eleven point nine five, I think it is, per kilowatt hour.
But how is that working if the books are already closed for twenty-three?
Well.
If they're paying twenty-three now, if the books are already closed, how does, how does that?
Uh, realistic, I, I don't know how they did it on their books, but what, what should have happened is you should have had a debit to an expense that you owed Altus and a credit to accounts payable. And then conversely, you should have had a credit to your utility expense and a debit to it. So in effect, you have money coming, more money coming back to you than you owed out. So I'm not sure logistically how, how they booked it on their books, that's how I'm going to book our books, uh, once I get a final number for June thirty, but I have not, I don't have an answer for you as to how.
Physically get a check. We physically get a check.
No, we get credits.
So it's not really?
So we pay less to you?
We're going to pay less.
We're going to pay less to UI.
It's paper mon, it's all paper money.
Well, no.
No, because if we, if we didn't have the solar, then our UI bills would be that much more. I, I.
For Tuesday?
So, I mean, it's. Yep.
If, if not Tuesday, one of our budget work, work chops is fine?
Yeah, I give you the spreadsheet that shows the, and then the Pages Farm gets the, there's three accounts on there the day.
Right, because they get a hundred percent.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any questions on the budget?
I'm going to motion to adjourn.
I didn't get to that on the item yet.
I know you're there.
Now, the next item is adjourned. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, okay. So we are back here on next Tuesday, April second. Same place, we are back here for our town council meeting.
They did a really nice job on this.
And budget, um, period.